Good morning. We'll start the regular session of Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors. Sean Walton, call call please.
Grant?
Here.
Schwartz? Hall?
Here.
Leyland?
Here.
Please take a moment to reflect on our actions for the moment. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is the issue received and proposed as amended. So who's? Motion as second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All the same time, motion carries. Item two is public comments. This is time for anyone to speak on an issue that is not on today's agenda. Item three is years of service award. To employees with 20 or more years of service.
Yes, we're celebrating Tony Schader with the Sheriff's Department of 25 years of service.
Do not believe he's here.
No.
Nope.
Thank you for your service. Number four, presentations of Blackhawk County Solid Waste Management Commission.
Good morning, Chairman Hall, Landfill Supervisors. I appreciate the time you can allow us here. My name is Brian Heath. I am the current Chairperson of the Blackhawk County Solid Waste Management Commission. With me today is John Foster. He is our landfill administrator. What we want to do today is provide some background of the landfills for some of the newer supervisors as well as kind of where we're going in the future. I'd also like to take a moment to thank Mr. Tom Little for his service that he provided on the landfill solid waste commission. We've got a lot of, a lot of really neat things happening. We've got, we went for our landfill gas project. We're now looking at resource recovery rather than just landfill operations. And I'm going to turn it over to John Foster and he can explain a little bit more about that. So, thank you for having us. Everybody, I've got a PowerPoint to do.
Great.
First thing I want to kind of talk to is about, just about the mission of the solid waste agency that we're, or excuse me, the solid waste commission. We're dedicated to providing safe and effective management, methods in the management of solid waste within Blackhawk County in Iowa while protecting natural resources. And with that, we're, we have establishment, we were established through a series of rules and laws. I'm going to skip kind of forward first. We were established basically in 1974. So we just finished up our first 50th anniversary for our, for the establishment of the agency. We are an intergovernmental agency. As a part, formed as a partnership between Blackhawk County and all the municipalities within Blackhawk County to address solid waste issues. At that time, we're talking about the introduction of the Resource Conservation Recovery Act. All the communities knew that we were shifting solid waste from a public health hazard into more of a, an environmental hazard as well. So we're trying to really understand how the, how our effects of management of solid waste affected the environment. And that's kind of the initial steps of where we're starting to look at solid waste management. Leaders at the time realized that there was going to be a significant amount of regulations and rules are going to be coming down the pipe. And so we figured out that it's better for us to all get together and, and try to manage this all as one. The initial commission was all, was all elected officials. They started going through, exploring different methods of solid waste management, primarily landfilling and incineration were the two that they're looking at. There was a resource conservation committee that kind of went out and started looking at a bunch of other opportunities that were there. So with the intergovernmental agency, as I mentioned, was established between all the municipalities and the county of Blackhawk. It's overseen by five commissioners. We have one that's appointed from the Blackhawk County itself. We have one that's appointed from the city of Cedar Falls. We have one that's appointed through all the other communities at large. And then we have two representatives from the city of Waterloo that make up our, our commission. I am the, let me go a little bit far to the back. So again, we looked at, I skipped forward again. Landfilling, we looked at a lot of the landfilling. So basically landfilling was selected as a primary method. As we started going through some of those rules, the citing process and all that seemed a little daunting for elected officials. And so at that point, a private contractor stepped up and said, hey, if you direct, one of the, one of the things that the commission does is we direct waste flow. So we're responsible for ensuring that solid waste is managed within our planning area in an environmentally safe manner. Part of that is, is we control where the waste can go within the state of Iowa, within the borders. And so with that, the private contractor said, if you design, if, if we build a facility, a landfill for you, will you direct the waste to us? And that's pretty much what the commission did for its first 10 years. From 1975 to 1984, we directed all of our waste through the private landfill, which is at the current site right now of where the facility is at. And they ran the facility. Well, when you start dealing with a lot of solid waste, it's more profitable when you get into the industrial and hazardous waste side. At this time, we had another major rule change that came along, which started classifying a lot of waste into hazardous materials or hazardous waste, which changed, which required a change for their permit if they were going to stay in that same business model. That company decided, that, that company started down the path of pursuing a hazardous waste permit. And most of the residents of Blackhawk County and the, and the neighbors all disagreed with that. And they filed, they ended up having a referendum, which requested the county and the commission to buy the landfill. And at that point, we ended up buying the landfill. So the commission owns the landfill. And then since again, we only had elected officials that were kind of on that board and starting to get more industry kind of representatives on that board, they decided to contract out the operations of the facility at that time. And when we're contracting out, pretty much what the commission has done is they've set their fees and then we've kind of controlled what type of waste that's being accepted. Everything else that happens at the facility is pretty much up to how the operation, how the operational contract wants to, wants to maintain it. As we've kind of gone through the other kind of milestone, all the, all the funds that we end up getting is all through our user fees. Again, we're intergovernmental agency. We do not rely on any taxpayer funds in our operations, which gets into a lot of the design permitting side. So the land, so the commission makes sure that we have plenty of airspace available for future expansion. Right now, we have roughly eight years of permitted capacity, or excuse me, eight years of constructed. That means we have about eight years of landfill airspace that we can continue using. Then we also have about another 25 years of permitted. What that means is permitted is that DNR has approved it, we can landfill there, we just need to build it. And as I've come before you guys to talk about during some of our bonding requests is that these sales are anywhere between $10 to $15 million. So it's one of those things we want to kind of pace out and not have that investment all upfront, plus all the risks that are associated with having to sell in place. So that gives us just kind of our current timeline of where we have for landfilling abilities. And with the plan that we've done in the past, we've owned quite a bit of land and where we have at least another 60 to 80 years of capacity just due to the land that we own. Again, we receive about 2,000 tons of waste per year. We're about the fourth largest facility within, fourth to fifth, depends on what year you're looking at, within the state of Iowa. We receive waste from five counties. Again, no different than 1974 is what we're seeing today, as we're starting to see more regionalization is needed in a lot of these waste management situations. And again, a lot of our, the basis of our waste management decisions have been mainly focused around final disposal in the landfill itself. Some of the other programs that we have is our semi-annual household hazardous waste program. That is a program designed to help with residents within Blackhawk County dispose of those potentially items that can go in landfill, but are potentially hazarded, that could eventually lead to hazardous conditions. We have that twice a year. The first one this year is going to be May 3rd at the city of Waterloo. And the second one that we're going to have is September 6th, which is going to be at city of Cedar Falls Public Works Facility. I'll probably come back and talk to you a little bit more about those events as well because we, those are all volunteer managed events. The commission organizes it. We take care of all the disposal costs and it's free of charge for, for all the residents. We do charge for any large amounts of cathode ray tubes that are delivered at that, at that time.
So who does that? Don, you?
That is me. Yep. So I kind of skipped over one of, one of the other thing, one of the milestones that we had was probably in 1990 is when they first established this, or 1996 is when they established the administrator position. I am the only employee for the commission. So everything else is all contracted out. So it's all, and it's, that's a lot of what I end up doing is going through, trying to set up those events, set up those contracts, and then trying to get all the volunteers that are able to help us. One of the partnerships that we have that, nice little lead in, the next one is our educational partnerships. We have a partnership with the C triple E as well as the Blackhawk County Public Health to support two Green Iowa AmeriCorps positions. They're also there to kind of help with that event as long as with some other food, other environmental outreach. Another program that we have is our educational outreach programming. Basically, it's focused on really understanding the environmental impact of your solid waste decisions to kind of get out there, educate, given because of our background of the hazardous waste conditions with the hazardous waste site. We have a very aggressive program going out to industry and into commercial industries to understand how they, how their decisions impact the environment. And again, we try to promote members' programs, which is kind of one of the issues that we're kind of bring up, where we're moving into the, into the future as well as submit, support our members in what, in their, in their solid waste and climate action plans.
Again, my question would be, you're doing that now? Are you contracting that? I know you used to have some employees.
Right. All this is kind of in my, we've never had employees. I'm the only one. So we used to have the, the partnership with Blackhawk County Conservation for the Waste Track Education Team. That was the commission providing funding to Blackhawk County Conservation for two staff, well, one and a half, one staff position specifically for solid waste and the other one was for conservation and they kind of bounced back.
Came to our meetings quite often.
Yep. But those were, those were all contracted service out to Blackhawk County, out to Blackhawk County Conservation. So, and so that was one of our cases where we ended up stepping in. And I know that the kind of conservation really kind of wanted to start getting their, their education program as well. So we utilize those landfill tipping ones to help get those, those individuals onto their budget and try to work more on a sustainability for that. As I mentioned, a lot of when we look at originally when the, when solid waste agencies came, when the solid waste commission came around and these partnerships came around, they're all focused mainly on landfill diversion and for environmental protection. When I said 1980s, that's when we started looking more at landfill diversion. That was really kind of the big change because we started seeing a lot of the airspace within the state being consumed, people not really understanding how that kind of the cycles work. And so we started targeting a lot more of waste diversion. So we've kind of had more of an opinion on waste diversion. Now we're going through another cycle to where when we look at waste management, we need to look at it more as resource conservation. How are we really extending the life of a lot of the materials that are going and how do we extract value out of all, out of waste that's coming through? One of the next initiatives that we ended up doing was our landfill gas to renewable energy. This was a, this was a pretty big project for us to undertake. As the waste decomposes within the landfill, it creates methane gas and a variety of other issues, gets emitted up in the atmosphere and contributes to greenhouse gas warming and other climate change. So by doing this, we're actually installed a gas collection system in. In about five to eight years, we would be required to have one in there. We did this preemptively. And through a public-private partnership, we had them make that investment into the gas collection system so that we're meeting our future regulatory needs. And then we're actually pulling that gas off and we're marketing it as a transportation fuel. So this is pretty, this is a pretty cutting edge project. It's definitely taken Blackhawk County to one of the major counties within the country. Out of the entire country, as I mentioned before, there's about 120, 130 of these projects. And the state of Iowa, there's only two. And so within, because of this project and the other project that, that was in the area, we're looking at probably having three or four more come online within the next few years because of our leadership. So this is kind of just one example of changing from a waste, a product that used to be waste into more of a resource. And we're looking at more of the, the energy recovery that we can get out of waste. Again, why we talk about the education outreach portion of this, behavior change is huge. We've been doing it for over 50 years. We're really not going to stop the whole waste issue. But so we're kind of beating it from the backside. So we're bringing in technology to kind of hit that. My challenge over the past few years have been really to kind of talk to stakeholders as well as the commissioners to get them to understand that kind of point of view is that we need to really look at not waste diversion as landfill diversion. We need to look at more as resource managing, management and how to really maximize the value of that waste. So really what we've been doing is, is we want to start investing into, kind of already hit on it. We're kind of touching on a lot of different things and there's not a lot of control. So we're trying to work through contractors to do specific missions that the commission needs to do. So we're investing in the more dedicated staff to kind of guide and, and direct our educational program. I view this, I view this as more of a force multiplier where they can identify those individuals that are out there already within their missions, whether it be nonprofit or private organizations, and even individuals that have a passion in this kind of area. How do we encourage that? How do we drive them to continue carrying on the good work that we're trying to do? And so that's kind of a lot of what we're trying to do through our education outreach program, through that strategic goal. The other side is we're looking at diversion opportunities. One of the issues that we recognize is that there's four different processors for your, your residential kind of recyclables within Blackhawk County. Creates a huge issue when you start talking about our education outreach. Each one of those processors has their own regulate, their own rules on what they're willing to accept or their acceptance criteria. Top that off, you've got different haulers that want to do different type of acceptance criteria as well. So when we go out and we try to educate people about what is, what can and can't be recycled, we have to refer them back to their communities, which is kind of defeating the purpose of what we're really here to do. We're here to try to help save our communities, time and effort and a lot of resources so that we don't have to do a lot of duplication stuff. And so economy is a skill is the other one that we're looking at. So we're going to try to figure out how do we get more of a unified message throughout Blackhawk County or at least kind of simplify it a little bit more so we do have more of a common message on how some of these recycling programs work. The other side is to evaluate right now all of our processing that's leaving the area. A lot of times when we talk about solid waste, kind of people think more of the garbage recycling side. It has a lot more to do with economic development as well. So I spent a lot of time, just our greenhouse gas project that I was talking about, their RNG project, that's about a $20 million investment in our community of course. And that brought at least five, at least five permanent jobs that are doing that work and it brought in probably about 150 construction jobs. So just a simple project like that does have economic development. When we start talking more about this investing into resource recovery infrastructure within Blackhawk County, what I'm talking about is how do we relocate industries into Blackhawk County that can utilize materials that we are now considering as waste? Move them into a material that can actually be reused and has a value right off the bat. ADS is probably one of the good, a good example of that here locally. Unfortunately, ADS is a plastic manufacturer. They take plastics from around the country. They grind, the facility here, they grind it up, the waste plastic, grind it up into resin beads, then they use it for agricultural type to make that. What I've found out just through conversations with them is they're importing a lot of their plastic from outside of the state. That's crazy. So we need to figure out how can we make these connectors within the valley to make those shipments to them to help us reduce the greenhouse gas impacts of the transportation cost, reduce the cost for them to make that stuff. So little, little things like that. Another one that we're kind of considering, it kind of got thrown in my, a bug in my ear is looking at like textile recycling. I mean, we've got a lot of textiles that are within the Blackhawk County, whether it's a smaller portion of the waste stream that we see, what would it take for us to get somebody involved in doing more of the processing of the textile waste instead of shipping that material out to another state or to another country to take care of? So these are some of the, some of the shift in thought, in the thought that the commission is doing, what we're looking at, resource management. It's taken a long, just for the commissioners to kind of get that concept. And I know kind of throwing it here to you guys, it might still be a little foreign to kind of think about it, but once you kind of wrap your mind around it, there's a lot more areas that we can influence as we're moving forward. So that's kind of the summary that I have of at least kind of where we're at, a little quick background so we can kind of understand where we're going at. I know that Kenny, I will just turn it over to Brian. You have anything else to kind of cover?
No, I probably don't.
So I know that kind of the purpose of this is, is that once somebody gets on the board and is on the commission, especially through their appointments, that is usually one of those appointments we prefer to kind of stay on if possible. It is very technical in nature when you start getting into it. And the reason why I'm kind of bringing this up specifically now is because we're going to have some really big projects, we're going to be some really exciting things coming down the pipeline. It's just, it's going to take somebody that's going to have to be very active into what we're doing. And it's, and some of it's going to actually take probably some policy support as well. So we need to make sure that we're kind of going back and forth in communication and be able to kind of get that, learn to that support that we need.
When you're saying policy support, you mean just from the county or you mean from all the community?
It could be all the community. It could be a local policy, it could be a county policy, it could be state policy. One of the, one of the things that we're working on right now is more aligned with state, an issue that we're running into is a lot of lithium ion batteries. Rechargeable batteries are everywhere. And so we have different types. We have those that you can remove out of, out of things like battery, like watches and stuff like that. And we have others that are embedded. The issue we run into is they start fires. And so we've had a lot of landfill fires, especially when you start getting into recycling. People are thinking that some of these electronic items are recyclable and they go through your curbside programs. They don't go through your curbside programs. So there's, Cedar Falls has a nice program for electronics. I suggest taking them there. But the problem is, is especially when you get into the recyclers, where as they go through these material processing facilities, they'll start a fire. And the other side of that is, is now we're running into insurability of those facilities because of these random fires. And so that's another issue that we're kind of running into as a solid waste industry. What we're doing right now as an industry and trying to support as well as just the commission itself is doing a, expanding out the, the legislation right now that calls for, it's been a lot of some thought about this, like lead acid battery. You can't just throw away lead acid battery. There's a program in place for those to be returned and recycled. We want to expand that out into, to include all the lithium ion batteries and make it more of a extended producer responsibility. It's kind of what it is. So that's a policy that we're kind of, it's not so much here, but those are things that we may ask, is it just talk to your legislator and say, or your lobbyist or liaison, legislative liaison, to kind of help, kind of push some of those issues and so that we can move forward.
Well, as you know, it's been, I guess for, I don't know, a long time, it's been the supervisor, a supervisor, one of us that has been on, served on your board. And as you said, it started out of like with mayors and supervisors was kind of the makeup and that's changed for all the others except for us. Is that, I mean, do all the other communities have a representative, not a mayor?
Right. The, so we have two that are city, well, one typically Waterloo kind of bounces back and forth on their appointments. They can either have two city staff or they'll have a city staff and they'll have an industry representative. So right now, we just happen to have two city staff that are on there. Cedar Falls, it seems like they've kind of gone towards the city staff so they utilize their solid waste staff. Because again, a lot of what their programs and what they're doing, their staff knows kind of what needs to happen and they kind of facilitate some of that discussion back and forth. The other one is a small community one. That's the one I'm kind of worried about, trying to figure out how to, how that works. John Martis, he's the former mayor of Evansdale is the, is the other communities. I kind of glossed over that one, but all the other communities, my understanding of that process is all the other communities appoint somebody and they have to all agree on that appointment. So when John retires, that's going to be quite a bit of work to try to figure out how to fill that position. And I don't really see that maybe, might be in one of those elected officials or it might be somebody else that has a little bit more knowledge within the, within the environmental sustainable. That's not necessarily what we're looking at as well. It could be, one of the thoughts that I've kind of had with Tom prior to this and I think with you a little bit is where we're going as well, we, we come to this board quite a bit for our, our financial backing, for bonding. That's something where maybe a finance director might be able to help kind of get a good idea where we're going with our finances and give you a better, better idea of where we are. Instead of kind of sitting near the, a couple of weeks before we start doing a request for a bond, well, where are you? What's going on? Another one could be even as we're talking about employment issues, as we're kind of evaluating, do we continue going down the path of going operating, contracting out of operations? Or do we establish our own staff to take care of that? Do you have that discussion? Is that something your HR director can kind of have out and kind of help with input on that one as well? So there are other areas where the county, your public health, you have an enforcement, environmental enforcement officer over there that deals with the solid waste permitting for hauling trucks and goes out to do the compliance inspections for litter, litter stuff too. So that might be another opportunity to kind of engage them a little bit more and be more of a conduit between the board and you guys. It all depends on what your time commitments are as well. I mean, I think that's what I've been hearing from a lot of the, from just conversations with other like middle, is that you are getting pulled into a lot of different directions. It's hard. You're, you're more of a generalist than necessarily a specialist when you get to some of the stuff there. And some of the topics that we deal with and concepts are very, can be very technical at times.
I was going to say, typically, I think it's been, it's been a requirement that we've had like your monthly meeting. So it's been, or what we've assumed has been your monthly meeting and not much other. Maybe there were additionals occasionally. But it sounded like you were kind of ramping that up or expecting to ramp that up from a time commitment.
No.
So whether it's staff or us or whatever, do you start spending more time, I guess, just to get an accurate picture of what you're looking at for a month or whatever?
No, exactly. So we have our monthly meetings. Meetings are typically probably about 30 to 40 minutes. How much is this? We're going to start getting into probably some little longer ones. Next month's meeting is going to be rather probably a little longer. I'd say probably about an hour and a half maybe. I hate throwing numbers out there because again, you never know with public meetings where they go, we can kind of guesstimate. We're going to be talking, next month, we're actually going to be talking about, we should have a study back talking about whether we want to continue operating our facility as contracted and out, or do we want to actually start looking at having our own staff to operate it? So the three options, that's one option, two options that we're out there. The other option is a hybrid, do we kind of split it up half and half, have more of a push pack operation in the front half where more of the diversion opportunities are in the, in the scale house are all brought in-house. There's a lot of, there is a lot of policy decisions that are going to be in that one because again, like I said, we've made the decision to outsource because that's the way it was decided back in 1974 and we've kind of adapted to it. Now that policies have changed, the contract is, restricts the commission from really what we're trying to do a little bit more in utilizing our biggest asset, which is land. And it also hinders that contractor because that contractor really can't, they're trying to adjust to a whole bunch of risk out there and try to give you a five years risk without truly understanding what all is involved. So there's a lot of kind of, there's a lot of moving components on that specific decision. That's going to be huge. Either one of those decisions kind of directs where we're going to go the rest of the time. Other projects that we're looking at is right now, the organic waste fraction of the land, of waste going in the landfill is about 40%. And of that, we're talking probably 25% of that could possibly be recovered. And so we're going to start looking into how are we going to maintain that, how are we going to manage that waste outside of the landfill so that we're, we're recovering the energy through every energy system in place? And then what kind of infrastructures do we need to develop in that? So there's going to be a lot of discussion and a lot of, that's one of the things I'm going to end up doing is, is pushing the commissioners because again, you are there to help me develop, to figure out what the policy decisions are. And I'm going to be the guy that's going to fill in those gaps on more of the technical stuff.
John, can you define organic waste?
So organic waste is going to be any kind of waste that can kind of break down and like more of a methane gas. So ideally, it's going to be like food waste. Probably your biggest one that you're looking at. We have, and when I'm saying food waste, I mean, you've got your regular household food waste, but you also have major distributors, warehouses that are produced and you have industrial organic in the larger commercials, businesses that are producing food, food waste, that production waste is coming off of that. So those are a few items that we end up getting into. One of the issues that we're looking at down the horizon is bio solids. As you get through the PFOS, polyfluorinated substances, that's going to be a huge issue and I know it's everywhere. And so one of the issues we're looking at right now, bio solids are being land applied. Eventually, they're not going to be able to be land applied. So I want to position the commission so that way we have an opportunity to help address that issue for the wastewater treatment plants within, within the, within Blackhawk County. So that way, that's not another added cost to our communities which are dealing with that waste. So those are just a few examples. So I just, that might be.
Yeah, I will say that it sounds like there's a lot of moving pieces and you guys are really at sort of a tipping point here. I don't know that I'm completely comfortable not having a board supervisor there. I also would like to see us more regularly meeting with finance, with HR, maybe it's just a joint meeting of all county resources so that you're not, if we just have one of one of those staff members as the lead, then you're still missing the boat on, on, you know, some of the other stuff. So I think having a board of supervisor member there helps. I'm more comfortable than, than we're all, since we're the ones who are often sort of asked on the dollar side, right? Having one of us there, uh, taking in all of the information, uh, and, and sort of filtering that through elected officials algorithm, there, there is some benefit to that because we've got to weigh a lot of stuff, uh, in order to make, in order to make those decisions. I know, um, just from conversation, I think Supervisor Schwartz had expressed some interest. I know we've got to do, once we, once we officially have our fifth, uh, member of the board, um, have our committee assignments, I think from a personal and a professional perspective, Chris would be a, a, a great voice, um, there for you. But I, I'm not entirely, yeah, I'm not entirely comfortable with us not having a, a, a board member there. Uh, I think if we have some intentionality in creating a table meeting of sorts with county resources to help address some of those specific needs and have a supervisor member there to have a more holistic approach.
I know, in my conversation with John, I said, and I knew it creates more work for you as well, I said, sometimes interacting with the board a little bit more, so all of us become more updated and more informed because it's still a lot when one supervisor goes to inform us all, um, what's going on and we all get busy doing that for weeks get by and it was, oh yeah, that's right, I should have mentioned that. And so that is helpful, I think, I know it's been just a lot of you and Supervisor Little, um, and, and having to carry that back and sometimes those things, you know, just get missed. And so I just thought interacting with you with all, all of us helps sometimes an update.
I say this is.
Especially if a lot going on.
And you're right, and that's, and that's one of the priorities that I like to have is to be able to maintain those, for my role, I'd rather maintain those, those member, those, those relationships with our members, because again, I'm here to sort of you, trying to carry out, understand what you guys are doing, what you need, and so that needs to be more of a priority as, as I bring on more sta, as if we bring on, as we bring on more staff, that should free up that time, so I'm doing some of those things.
And it's much easier to do it when the bonding came up, when it needed to be all of us supporting that, instead of just the one you had on your board and you know about it and us was kind of foreign to or new and it was just like, okay, a little more front end, that probably helps us all support you, so.
And my, and really the goal that I was looking at is just presenting you with the options and then pushing you for your decision and understand why you want that decision and necessarily just, this is the way it's always been. You gotta figure me out.
Appreciate it. How many, how many questions?
Yeah, this is great.
Any other questions?
I was just gonna ask you, how many employees are out there now at the landfill?
Commissioner employees?
Uh, well, how, so are they, that's where I guess where I'm confused, I've always thought that they were county employees, when I go to take a, a load out there, uh, to the landfill to drop stuff.
They're not county employees.
They're not county employees.
Oh, so that's kind of where it gets into, uh, I'm, the county is my employer record, but I work for the commission, I'm a contractor for them. So all the, all, everything that comes in, we have an agreement that we pay back to county for all the overhead that's involved with the administrative portion of our position. As the, so we don't have, so we don't have, I'm the only employee. Everybody that's out there are all contractors and they're all, they're all employees of that contractor.
Okay, who's the contractor?
So it's gonna be Waste Tech Inc., right?
Okay.
Contractor right now, and that's, they've been, when I, when I go back and talk about the original contract, the, the original private landfill owner at the time, Land Service Corp., ran it for the first five years and we went out for bid, that's when Denver Construction received that and then Denver Construction spun off this Waste Tech and they've had it ever since.
It's a long-term relationship.
Right, very much so. And it's very, and that's what the, what's the one other reason why we're looking at that agreement anyway, because it's limited to very few contractors. And, and really, it favors them because they're already there and they already got the capital equipment and that's kind of where it hinders us a little bit more. So these are some of those discussions that we kind of went into, I just understand, really goes back to when do you want to contract out services versus when do you want to have them in-house and what are your benefits for that?
So it was Waste Tech?
Waste Tech Inc., yep.
How many employees is that, that's all there in operational?
Uh, about twelve. Any other questions?
County still landowner?
What's that?
County still landowner? You said that the, the purchase was county and it's now no longer county.
It's a commission, it's all, it was all in the commission's name.
Yeah.
Yep, so all, all the assets were within the commission.
You got nothing else, right now?
No, that's all right.
I'll find you later.
Got my name and number, you got my number and email, so I'm always available for further discussions.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and a lot of economic development would be great.
Exactly.
So thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we've got item five, claims and payments. This is a resolution that the board of supervisors approve expenditures, that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the arrogance of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is six hundred and sixty thousand, seventy-eight dollars and ninety cents, and the sixty forty fund is two thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. In terms of large insignificant payments, we are paying for, um, a snow plow today, hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and one dollars, and we are making some payments toward courthouse renovations and other ARPA projects, other, it's, everything appears to be in order. There is one payment that I neglected to mention a week ago that I want to talk about. For the first time, we owed an arbitrage payment to the Internal Revenue Service for one of our bond issues that was not spent down very quickly, there's still a balance, there's a large project with E nine one one that is still ongoing. So, um, when that happens, in order to preserve our tax exempt status of the bonds, we occasionally, I've tested every five years, we had to remit part of that interest earned to IRS and I neglected to mention that and I wanted to be sure and do that because it's very unusual for us to do that. We've been in a very, um, unusual interest rate environment for many years where rates kept going down and it wasn't a problem, but in the last year or two, with rates rising, we had bonds that were issued at low rates that were earning higher rates of interest, which is what is prohibited by federal government. So anyway, just wanted to share that. Everything else appears to be in order.
Motion in a second, motion, Michelle Walter.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz. Brandt.
Yes, yes.
Item six, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. I looked up and didn't see Kathy.
No, she's not here today, you guys are stuck with me. Brian Brennan, the Assistant County Engineer. Uh, originally, it was some warmer weather last week, we had a lot of crews out cutting brush on their county roadways. Um, it's not the case this week, at least as of today, and, you know, planning for some icy weather tomorrow, so that's one of the things our staff will, will be doing is putting in plows and getting everything ready for that. Um, we also have a grading project that has been going on out on Brandon Road, it's a little shoulder grading, ditch grading project, the contractor has finished that work for the winter, they will come back in the spring and kind of do the final finish and seeding on that one, so that's exciting to see it coming along, especially through the winter. Um, other than that, we have our bridge crew out working on some bridge stacks that they are pouring for our, for our bridge replacements next summer. So they'll be pouring, uh, the fourth one of the first bridge tomorrow morning and then after that, we'll be waiting on some more steel to get the second one started for the year. Questions? Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Assistant Senior HR Director and here to introduce our HR intern, Kaylee Gilson. Uh, she will be graduating this summer from the University of Northern Iowa with Business Administration. Uh, she'll be part of our team for the next, uh, pretty much spring to part of the summer. So just wanted to introduce her and bring her a part with all the different departments and the HR processes and activities, um, and just appreciate the support for the internal and we're excited for, for her to join our team.
What was your name again?
Kaylee.
Kaylee, good to meet you.
Welcome, Kaylee.
Welcome too.
Thank you, all right, thank you so much.
What days, will she be here every day, some, or certain days?
Almost every day, yep, except one day a week, so about, we're shooting for anywhere twenty-five to thirty hours a week, so, and yeah, and, uh, not to put too much work on her, but that must her, but, um, pretty much Monday, Tuesday afternoons, uh, Wednesday and Fridays will be kind of that nine to three time is our plan, so, yeah.
Okay.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Kathy DeWitt, Marketing Core Leader. Uh, in October, the board approved, uh, that I apply for the TCU Certified Public Communicator Program and I was notified last week that I got it. So next week, hopefully next week, maybe the following week, I'll have more details and be presenting a travel request, but I just wanted to thank the board for their support for that program. It'll be, to catch you up, it'll be a, a week in July this year, a week in July next year and a couple of days in January, but we'll walk away with a strategic communications plan and I'm hoping also to have a crisis communications plan, uh, coming out of it, so we're excited about that.
Is it January the twenty-sixth? Just thinking through the budget.
Yes, yeah, I know, Michelle's already, uh, yes, so July of, July of twenty-five, January twenty-sixth, January twenty, or July twenty-sixth, so. Um, but they'll work with us as far as fiscal years and, and such as far as payments. And last week, I did apply for a scholarship to cover half of the tuition costs through National Association of Counties of Information Officers, so. Uh, and then the video showcase, that was completed, uh, at the end of the year, last year got put on the website. Uh, I just wanted you to know in case somebody asks you, I've started the process of reaching out to community members, organizations that help source videos that are part of that and asking them to, if they would like to share it. Both Waterloo and Cedar Falls Cables will be sharing it on their cable access channels, but, um, just kind of reaching out to see what uses people might find for them and so if you were to be asked about it, I just wanted you to know that I was doing that. Uh, I'm starting, they've been on the website since December, I'm starting now to post them on Facebook, so you'll start seeing them also, feel free to share them. And then a wise IT director told me never to make web, web updates without letting the board know, so I've been very busy this month in January, updating some elected officials, um, but also the calendar now is a usable calendar, all of the public meetings are on the calendar, I'm working with Yolando to also put the events that they attend for Veterans Affairs, um, on the calendar and we've gotten all the agendas and minutes updated, um, up to this point. Uh, we did, uh, scheduling button for the treasures for the no wait, uh, the recorder's office, we've done a table and a new page for boating information because it was all kind of strung out on the page, now it's a table that's a little bit easier to read. Uh, some updates with Veterans Affairs, we put the actual veterans video on both their page and the commission page and, um, have updated some, several of their forms that were in the old branding that needed to be updated. And then planning and zoning, we updated all of their, uh, forms that are online, made them fillable, made them branded and added the Waterloo address to the bottom because they were all coming over here, so. That's it, any questions?
No, I just want to say kudos, I saw the county video that posted on YouTube the other day, nicely done.
Yes, well, we had a, a great front person with Amanda, but yes, it, they all, there's seven of them, they're on the home page of the website, but there's seven of them and I'll be releasing them, um, every week, uh, on Facebook, but yeah, they turned out really nice, it was a lot of work, but it was a really great project.
Nice.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else in the room or online? Oh, yeah?
Um, just want to announce, so longtime employee Kim Hewitt, she retired, her official day was last Friday, January thirty-first, and excited to announce our new payroll specialist will start tomorrow. Miranda Sharp, she comes from Community Social Services, so we're excited to bring her on staff.
All right. Next up on the agenda, we've got minutes approved for the January twenty-eighth meeting.
Some.
Second. Go to motion in a second, all of favor.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Item eight, consent agenda, the following items will be acted upon by a simple resolution without separate discussion unless someone from the board or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately.
Some. Second.
Motion in a second.
Schwartz. Brandt.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Item nine A, resolution of the contract between Black Hawk County and, I know it's gonna mess us up, Weber Urothane Insulation, Inc., of Waterloo, Iowa for the installation replacement at the Laporte Rose Shop, the total amount of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred be approved and direct the chair to sign for same and to receive and place on file a certificate of assurance as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
Some. Second.
Questions at all? This is a, uh, just a contract to do, uh, to redo some insulation at our Laporte City Shop. Uh, we're having some moisture issues there that's causing some damage to the insulation, so this, this would be to remove the damaged insulation, apply the spray foam, and then to follow that up, we're starting to work with some ventilation contractors to try and get some plans put together to improve the ventilation at the shop as well and solve the issues there, so.
Thank you. This is a resolution, Michelle Walter.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz. Leyland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Item nine B, resolution of the lowest responsible bid received by Denko Highway Construction Corporation, Mingo, Iowa for project FMC zero zero seven, one seven five dash, five five dash zero seven, HMA crack filling in Black Hawk County with a total bid of a hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty cents, with the engineer's estimate of two hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. Be awarded and direct the chair to sign a resolution authorizing the county engineer to sign, uh, sign the contracts and to receive and place on file the contractor's bond and certificate of assurance as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
So this one's for our annual crack filling contract, um, typically we have let this project locally, uh, this year we did elect to have that run through our form of market accounts, this was led by the DOT, the DOT last month, um, but other changes other than that, Denko was the contractor we had last year and we've been very happy with their work.
Resolution, Michelle Walter.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz. Brandt.
Yes.
Paul.
Item ten A, resolution that the bridge embargo establishing vehicle and load limits for structure zero seven four nine eight zero crossing Spring Creek located in Fox Road between Joseph Road and Spring Creek Road, uh, North Lane of section twenty-four, T eighty-eight and R eleven W, with a load limit of twenty-one ton be approved and the signs be erected advising of the permissible maximum weight as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
Second, I'm sorry.
So this is just an update to the load rating for the, uh, bridge on Fox Road over Spring Creek. Like it says, it's currently posted at twenty-seven tons, it will be updated to twenty-one tons with this action. Just an update, it just had an update to the load rating, which just caused us to revise the posting for that. Um, we do currently have this bridge in our five-year plan for replacement in twenty-twenty-eight.
Ryan, what's the estimated time, like once that construction project begins to get that done in twenty-eight?
To replace the project, so we'll probably actually start survey on the project within the next year or so. Um, typically, our project development timelines are anywhere from a year, year and a half to get the project to letting, and then from there, that project would typically be replaced within, you know, typical construction season.
Okay. Did it take three, six months, three months to get that done?
It depends on the project, but that's probably not a bad, I mean, you're gonna be three to four months depending on the size of the bridge, conditions that they're dealing with.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Michelle Walter.
Schwartz. Leyland.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item ten B, motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing, uh, bid opening to be held nine oh five on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five in Board Room two oh one, the Black Hawk County Courthouse, three sixteen, East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, an open bid for the proposed purchase of steel to be used in the construction of project L three zero two eight, Hawk Road Bridge, eight eight dash one three dash one seven dash zero four dash one zero.
So moved.
Second.
So this is for a, uh, just a bid to acquire steel materials for one of our bridge crews projects this summer, so this one's on off-road to south of the Waterloo city limits, um, so this is typical for us to apply, you know, to purchase materials through a bid, uh, we just did it for our first project on Mount Vernon Road earlier this year, so this will just be the second one for the bridge crew to construct this next summer.
Ball call please.
I don't think you need a resolution. You don't need a resolution. Just a motion.
Gotcha. All of favor.
Aye.
Uh, motion to approve the personnel representation submitted for an IRVM technician one, a full-time replacement as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions other than this one's just a vacancy that came up and we're looking to get it filled to, to back.
No questions. All right, all of favor.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. D, discussion of possible board action to approve participation in Black Hawk County's group health insurance plan for the education outreach coordinator position for Black Hawk County Solid Waste Management Commission.
So moved.
You may not want to.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, again, Amanda from, uh, Human Resources, and I sent this email about this and this occurred while with John's presentation, um, so we have a policy, um, actually, I should back up, uh, John has reached out to you about a position that, uh, they're interested in filling the education and outreach coordinator role, which I provided to you all, um, in my email previously, um, do you have any questions about that position at all for John or for I, for we?
It's a full-time position, wasn't it, John?
So.
It's a full-time position.
Yep.
And be housed at.
At the contract office.
Yep, and so, um, for what he covered today, again, just supporting his role and it not being a contract role in the sense of under the contractor for like the other employees that are out there, this would be one that, uh, the county would be that employer of record in a sense that we have a pass through, uh, when it comes to payroll, approvals, benefits, and we do have a policy here that the board, um, requires whenever there's an agency, uh, a local agency, it says it's supported by Black Hawk County property taxes, and I know John covered that is necessarily isn't covered by property a local agency, it says it's supported by Blackhawk County Property Taxes, and I know John covered that necessarily isn't covered by property taxes, but it does allow for even those that are just local agencies connected with Blackhawk County, that they can be on our group insurance plans, those positions for this policy. How that typically works is that we offer them the over rates, which I provided to to John, and again, we're at a pass-through that goes through the auditor's office where that individual would participate in our open enrollment, be subject to any of the other benefit changes, like a regular county employee. Administratively, it's nice to have it just follow the county policy and the premiums that we have set in the past. We've had some agencies deviate from that. I believe at one time EMA had slightly different premiums than what our county employees, which just administratively makes it a little bit more challenging. So this really mirrors what John Foster, the administrator, was already offered. So it's no different than that arrangement, and it would just be sending it to the education and outreach coordinator position.
Who else do we have these agreements with currently?
I believe the EMA coordinator is the only other one, I think, indeed.
You know, in the past, we have turned down some.
Yeah, I should, but let me back up. County Social Services, we had a few. Because we had, I think I showed you the one in 2018 where they were, had a contract with the region in the southern part of the state and we were providing those services, so. But yeah, they have, the main concern would be that, you know, we, the county gets reimbursed for all of the premiums, like the employer's share, the employee's share, but it's the claims that we don't get reimbursed for. We've had conversation around that with like the assessor's office. That's another one that used to be on our plan that isn't at this time, where you don't actually, there's not really a good way to single out those claims since we are self-insured, to then charge that back to the agency, so. In that sense, you know, it's not a total wash if there is claims, but if there aren't claims, then, you know, it is being covered for the actual employer's cost or the individual to participate in our plan, so.
I know it's come up before, admin fees, that type of thing. We've talked about that with the bonding as well. Is that something that was discussed or considered or is done now even with John or not?
Not necessarily from, I don't know that there's any administrative fees that you pay for the like HR services or for auditor services, so that hasn't been discussed. For this particular case, the COBRA rate does include a small administrative fee, and it wouldn't necessarily be going to the EDC, it would essentially go to the county. So there is a slight administrative fee built in for this case because solid waste isn't supported by property tax dollars, right? So, so there is a small fee here, but not a general fee for like the pass-through arrangement that we have with like facilities, IT, HR, or for any of those arrangements that we have, whether it's.
And we don't utilize any of those.
I guess that's the only, you would have the, everything that's associated with HR is pretty much the only thing that we've done now. And that's something that we do have an agreement in place that says that the county can't establish any kind of fees that they need, and we can negotiate those at a time. There's a timeline that's in there on doing that. I did throw that out as an opportunity, especially if we're looking at having more, because this, this kind of poses a little different challenge for us now. Because right now, all my time, I track it, I report to Brian and that's it. Kind of through our discussions as well, it might be better if we kind of start tracking it through the county system, so there is a little bit more protections that we look at when we're managing time and there is more documentation besides just, this is when I'm off. So that, that's the discussion that's probably going to have to happen, especially when we start moving forward with this position. How does that really affect hours on HR, HR advice? Because really, mine is to an attorney. So whereas this might be a little bit more different when I'm trying to get like an individual employee discussion kind of a topic. So right now, I think it's just, pretty much we just set it just as a billing kind of on an hour, hourly basis.
Similar to like the assessor's office would be, if, you know, we kind of look at the year and say, well, do we have any HR postings, FMLA, personnel matters that we need tend to, and then we, yeah, bill at the end of the fiscal year. But I don't think the assessor has that arrangement like with the auditor's office. I think it's just rolled in and part of their regular processes, so. But yeah, as you mentioned, you know, it, it does help to set the stage at least for that determining or depending on where this proceeds all solid waste, but we would like if we're going to move forward with a position that is recognized under the county, that it follow the county policies and the plans that we have in place as opposed to being its own separate kind of plan and tailored to just solid waste, so.
So if someone hires a someone that he can't get along with, will you utilize our HR services for that?
Be recommended.
That's good.
But, yep.
It just is clean. You already have the resources in place and, I mean, I'm going to have to go out and hire somebody else to do it if that's the case. I'm going to spend more, I'd rather spend the money supporting the infrastructure that's already there than necessarily going out somewhere else and hiring.
How about your thoughts on future employees you've been thinking?
Ask me about a month and all, maybe two months. Like I said, this, this is a really big conversation. I think this is one of those topics that I've been pushing the commissioners awful hard on to kind of really understand why are we doing it? What benefits is it to the community? And so, like I said, we're going to have the initial discussion this month. I truly doubt we're going to get an answer. I'd rather kind of posit table that discussion until the March meeting to kind of give a little bit more time to kind of think it over and mull it over to make sure. Because it is huge, but the clock is ticking because that contract ends June 30th of 2026. Equipment lead time is 18 months. You know, just to go through a bid process with all notifications and wind that up, I'm already talking, you know, at least 12 months out. So I would say this time next year, if not, we're already talking about awarding the contract. So that's something that we need to make sure we're kind of working towards right now.
So with approval of this, whether it's approved, you know, we plan to post the position. It's really to allow us to advertise, you know, when we have those conversations with the fans as to like what is the benefits? We'd like to say, well, it's the same as Blackhawk County employees, so. But, you know, it ultimately reports under the solid waste administrator and the commission. So we'll be getting that position posted here and I've given a timeline to John and we'll help support him in getting the position filled, so.
Say you have a question as it relates to the health insurance. So John currently, I assume receives health insurance from the county?
Yep, that position has the option to. They can enroll or decline, so that, that was already in place.
Yeah.
And then, so this would be no different than that. And we'd probably have to have some sort of like either employment agreement or contract, kind of like how you always says, or something that, you know, definitely an offer letter that kind of goes over that information, but yet the solid waste administrator has eligibility to be on our plans.
Okay, and so we're just looking to add another position that would also have the benefits then?
Yep, this would be a second position. It just would be reimbursed through his budget. So it is fairly cost neutral. The only area that risk would be, you know, significant claims. Is that right, Michelle?
I think that's great.
Okay. Yep.
Because of liability, I think that's always been something that we've at least considered before, that it is somewhat different than the county's employees, but that's risk and neutrality.
Right. I think we're, you know, potentially could have an impact. If you have someone that has an unfortunate situation, it, it could increase our stop-loss reinsurance rate. That's probably where there's some possibility of that.
Right. I mean, that could happen with any of our employees and actually like there's 900, around 900 people on the plan that could be, you know, child, a spouse, anybody, so. But certainly more, I would say if you're having like the assessor's office, when we talked about, if they would come back on the plan. That is not adding just one person in their family, that's adding, you know, a larger, that would, I would anticipate probably a bigger impact than one position. Or if at some point with solid waste, if that contract changes, that you're then bringing those employees in-house, that would be it. You know, something to, you know, look at.
So when you say claims, so maybe I shouldn't be confused about this, but, okay, health event comes up, go to the, go to the provider and then, so the purpose of the premium each month, right, is to cover those except out-of-pocket costs, right?
It's a thing for the plan. Yep, so right now, like a family coverage, I think it's about $2,400 a month and the employee pays anywhere from 220 to 140 of that roughly. That's just, I'm just talking health at this point.
Yeah.
So solid waste would pay all of that, no different than like the departments pay that as part of their budget. And the claim would be, since we're self-insured, and Michelle might have to correct me a little bit here, but with being self-insured, we pay up to, like she mentioned, stop-loss, so we have stop-loss insurance. So if you have somebody who has a claim of nearing what?
I think it's 110 or 120,000 that we would have to pay before stop-loss.
Before our insurance would kick in. Stop-loss insurance would kick in.
So it's, you know, it's, it's not going to your doctor, it's
Yes.
You have to have a significant.
Well, I take answer for.
But there you go.
I mean, there's three-quarters of a million dollars probably in treatment costs.
That's impossible, yes, and that's why we purchase the stop-loss.
Right, okay.
So once we hit the limit that we pay ourselves, because you have to remember, there's 400 employees probably on it and we're, we are budgeting to pay that 2,400 a month for everybody that's a family. There's some singles where that's lower. Some people won't use that, so the purpose of insurance is to create a pool that, you know, if you're sick this year, all these other people are kind of helping cover that illness. Because hopefully, not everyone's ill, right? And, and it's a, hopefully it's, you hope it's temporary and that way the whole pool benefits. But when a person has a serious claim and they exceed that stop-loss limit, we do purchase what's called reinsurance policy that will pay for anything above that limit. So we aren't, if there's someone with that type of an issue, we're going to pay that first amount that we talked about and then the, the reinsurance policy carries the rest.
And why we haven't really been concerned with charging back a depart, because we don't charge our departments back for their employees' claims in that sense either.
Yeah.
So like, we wouldn't necessarily want to do that with either another local agency. Number one, I'd be concerned about discrimination on like medical conditions and things like that. But two, it just doesn't, like Michelle describes, it's a pool. And so the departments, you know, we budget for what that employer's cost is, less the employee's share. And then all of that, depending on how things shake out at the end of the year with claims, that self-insured fund either, you know, maintains, grows, or can decrease. And those are things that we look at renewal each year with our consultants to kind of gauge what, how to continue to make sure that's well funded and supported, so.
I'll talk with you more about that. Just got, that's news to me. I didn't know anything about a stop-loss deal there.
I think with being self-insured.
It would be very risky not to have stop-loss insurance. And we did a similar thing at Waterloo. They have a similar arrangement, at least used to, because I don't know about today.
And you'll see more of that with renewal coming up, right? I believe that we have a, or certainly could invite any board members to that meeting and then when it comes before the fire board, they kind of better understand how that operates with the self-insured fund. It is a relatively low risk, it's like.
And the reason that large employers such as ours tend to do that is, I have explored, I've done RFPs before. And this method was 25 to 30% cheaper than if you went to a, what you would call a fully insured plan where the insurer actually had to pay every dollar one of every claim. It's, it just becomes cost prohibitive.
Sure.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other questions about this or anything else?
Would you like to wait, say a full month for me to talk?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, there's more to learn for me. We're committing to something.
I have, yeah, one minute needed here to get into that in a long time. I think every time something like this comes up, additional.
Sure.
No motion?
I'm sorry, any?
I mean, there was a motion, I believe the process is now.
I think he said motion just for item ready to discuss it and it was kind of like.
But it wasn't certain.
So do we have to vote then on something?
You don't have to, but if you're going to vote on it, then you'd have to take a motion to add him.
Yeah, I would have, if we have to vote, I would have staying right now.
No, you don't have to vote.
Okay. Table it.
So we can come back possibly? Next week, help get your answers?
Yes.
Is that all right?
So you can keep going on.
And yeah, we'd like to get it posted. I know he's, John would like to have the position filled in April. So we could, if I could work with you guys or get anything answered in time for next week?
Sure.
That's fair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Work session 11. Discussion consideration of all aspects of the FY '26 budget. Board agency activities.
Your enthusiasm is underwhelming. If you would like a break, then be.
A quick five-minute break, recess, so, yep.
Give me a minute to work on getting set up, so that's.
Sorry. What's that? What do you think of it? I didn't use it. I think they want to. Yeah. Give me know when you're ready, ready to.
All right. Oh, you know what?
I forgot we can do it.
Yeah. What'd I do wrong?
You just share.
I know, but should I not? Should I stop?
It's up to you. You do it through the screen, it's just.
We can do, we can do this. That's why you have to start it. I just need to get to my, I apologize. Nope, go ahead. We'll use this because that. You can. We'll just be on one's page. We'll be okay. Maybe? Did I do something? Oh, I didn't have it in all the way? I'm sorry. It's doing something.
There you go.
All right. I like this better, actually.
I love, I'd like to have a panel here too.
We don't do this very often. You're here to help me out.
You just smoke segment.
Okay, so. This is, I got a bunch, well. I have a bunch that will be.
Yep. It's real time, actually, exactly what you're going to say. Remember, turn off your. Well, you, not later, but if you get a message.
My, this is better. This is safer. I like, no, I'm fine with this. I just forgot that I had that, yeah. I just don't do anything because you push the button. That's what I, because I just touched. Oh, I wonder if I hit, that's a button, isn't it?
It's on the screen. I'm paying any attention. I only happened to notice him like.
That's not good.
Oh. Oh, I could tell if it was sent to him and I could tell, you know, his face kept popping up, but I wasn't paying attention.
So it's actually the airbrush. Oh, I thought.
Look at the hell chain.
Yeah, I saw. Now I see, so now, now we know, now we know what we got to do. Yeah, I didn't know that.
Oh.
We learned something today, right?
Were you not nice?
Really hurt, but she did it.
Oh, it is. In most cases, we are. I can't hear like. Like it was. Sometimes I chip in here, should we be off these? Maybe that one might. But I can hear. Like. I can hear. I have a load or two.
I remember.
So they'll put a plant down there. John, do your track. The rendering, you know, so I can, you know, I need them, I can dump them on the, on the landscaping, so there's always one for them. The other thing is.
When the good save.
Huh? Good save.
All right. We're going to lose the shot here.
All right, so go as fast or as slow as you would like here. We're going to go through a lot of what we call board activities because these are items that are not supervised, I guess I'll say, by any of our other departments, so they're truly yours. The first one is the, whoops, I'm sorry, we need to wait for you here.
That was me and John.
So, board agencies. And I prefer this format that shows you, instead of broken down by things such as professional services, I find it more helpful to know what activities we're spending the money on. So, that, I have given it to you both ways, just in case people are interested in the second version. But I think I'm going to talk today about the first version, which should always say by activity for each type. So, for the first time this year, we're actually getting some fee revenue back from the Humane Society. If you remember, you passed a new contract and so there's been a few times that, um, as animals have been picked up from the shelter by their owners, we have received a small fee. So, I am budgeting to have some of that. Um, and then the cost allocation plan, that is primarily paid by the state for space that they occupy in county buildings. That is a really rough estimate of that revenue. It's the best I have today.
Is it that typical? I mean, what you've seen in the years, that?
Yes, if you, if you, it has risen, probably because cost of things have risen and I, I think maintenance maybe has spent some more time being able to track the time they spend on repairs and things. So, you see an increase there from, in twenty-twenty-three, it was a hundred and nine thousand. Twenty-twenty-four rose to almost a hundred and fifty. Some of that was a time, payment timing issue, so that's why I'm bringing it down to a hundred and twenty. That seems to be what we really got for a twelve-month period. So, hopefully, that is close. Then the next line, that's the contract for what we pay the Cedar Bend Humane Society to operate our animal pickup issues. Interco dues, which they had no increase this year, which is nice. Activity four-twenty, and there are several line items that appear on here, but the main one that I am budgeting in to make it easy for us to follow is thirty-one-ten general welfare. That is where we have historically accounted for our community funding. This year, I, I budgeted a hundred thousand for that, plus fifty thousand for the food bank. If you remember, in twenty-five, you discussed wanting to have a separate contract with food bank for fifty thousand that was not part of that grant funding process. So, that is how I've arrived at that amount. You, and then it will be, that's one of the decision points that the board will have is, is that how much you want to do? Do you want to do more? Do you want to do less? Next thing on here, small amount of tourism dues, and we have Department of Correctional Services. And then the amount we actually pay to have the cost allocation plan done, which you can see that investment of ten thousand is well worth the revenue we get back from doing that. Then we have CEGIS. That's Criminal Justice Information System. All, I believe, most, if not all, the cities in the county participate in that program. That primarily is to cover the software that is used by all the entities to communicate with the state about various things, running plates, all those kind of things. There is also twelve thousand dollars in there for capital that would only be used by Black Hawk County. They, Sheriff Neff said he would be proposing to use that if a camera goes out in a car or some smaller things like that. That's what he's thinking. And that has historically been at about that amount for several years in, in the budgeting process. Not necessarily what they've spent, but it's how they budget it. And then the last line on this is Met Transit. They do request funding from us annually for elderly rights. And I did provide a copy of the letter that they sent to us requesting twenty-five hundred dollars for twenty-six. That is a reduction. They've requested four thousand six hundred forty-one dollars for twenty-twenty-five and slightly less than that for twenty-four and around four thousand for twenty-three.
What did you say to twenty-five?
Four thousand six hundred forty-one. Yep, that's, yep.
That's a big drop over the last three.
Well, that eighty-eight thirty-nine is two years' worth of payments because there, there wasn't a payment made in twenty-three with the change in, um, their manager. We were trying to figure out how, what we were gonna use to document payment of that.
And, and I'm sorry, if you said it, I'm sure you would see just the increase of fifty-six hundred.
That is due to increased costs passed through from the Department of Public Safety at the state.
Mandated kind of.
Yeah, we know. We just don't have a choice not to do it.
I recall back up to that, uh, that three-ten, the, uh, the general welfare.
Yes.
From my recollection of the conversation around Cal Congress, I thought that we had expressed an intent for twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
I thought the intent of the conversation was on an ongoing basis, similar to other counties having sort of a, a standing commitment to their.
Fairs.
To their fairs. Um, I may go back and review, but I.
It's, it's fine. Do you want it outside?
Took action on it, but I think we were all, yeah, we were all talking about it. Knowing it. I think when you and I even spoke, you know, like seeing where they're at with their plan and some of those things.
Well, so I think, I think the, the, that was their feasibility study.
Yeah, the twenty-five seven, yeah.
The twenty-five was specific of.
And twenty-five and fifty, that one was for sure. We took action on that, yeah.
Okay, so my question about that is you want that to be in addition to the community funding?
I'd, I'd at least like to see it in there.
Okay. I, I just needed to know.
I would like to see it outside of the hundred thousand.
Right, yeah, in addition.
Fifty thousand for food, twenty-five for Cal Congress, and a hundred thousand.
Okay, I can add that, no problem.
Yes, no, maybe?
Yeah.
So, the fifty, well, you said for food, for the food bank, or, okay.
Yep, yep.
You're putting those in for a regular next year's type of thing. We talked about, and that wasn't included right now?
That is.
It is. It's probably in this line, but is it somewhere else?
It is in that line.
Okay, it is.
That, that's why it's a hundred and fifty.
Yep.
Okay.
So, this, so what I'm saying would take this line up to one-seventy-five.
Correct. Yep. Yeah, and I, I will make that change.
That clear? As clear as we can be, as clear as we are.
Yeah, I mean, there could be other things you want to change. That was.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
There's certainly budgets that we need to look at again too, so we know that, but yeah, thank you.
Are we ready to move on?
Yeah.
I'm going to jump the next two pages and we're gonna, the next activity should say board general supervision. Begin by activity. There are a lot of miscellaneous reimbursements for phone service and other things that run through. In fact, I think that's all of what that revenue is that you see. Is reimbursements from various entities for services they use.
There's a, First Judicial Court's got a forty percent decrease?
Yes, because you can see their actuals for the last two years have been less than five thousand. We, we've had it. I'm just trying to make it reasonable. I don't know. It's probably not necessary because it's a pass-through and out, but.
I've got a meeting with them on Friday. You just want to be.
Yeah, and that, yeah, I, so, you know, if they're gonna do something new that require more, I can put it back.
No, that's what I mean. Paper take a little.
Yeah. In terms of what we budgeted.
Yes, go ahead. No, I was gonna say Plankhurst Daycare is still on there and that's gone through.
Well, you can, yeah, you can see that in twenty-four, there was a credit there. So, unfortunately, that's gonna hang around until twenty-four falls off and then it will go away.
Okay.
And I, I can't tell you the.
I was gonna say, I wonder what that was.
I, I don't know where, I don't have a role in that billing, so I'm not sure why that is still there. So, the rest of this, the environmental restoration, that is due. That, um, we were requested to budget for two of the watershed organizations. And that there is a third that apparently is still not, you know, asking for membership as far as I know. I don't know if Chris is on, but. Okay. The general county management is an activity that, that is where I track. All things like my training, we have some arbitration budget in there in the event that we have issues with bargaining units. A lot of, um, miscellaneous, UCC, for example, is in that line item. There are just quite a few contracts that, that we administer that run through that.
I'm assuming that the discrepancy between twenty-three and twenty-four was just a billing cycle.
Well.
Is it averaging out or?
It, it's got something to do with ARPA.
Okay.
Um, so when you look at the actual expenses, particularly for twenty-twenty-four, that's a very large amount. And that is because we, we had set up this Agency one-oh-two, which is Board General Supervision, was set up, that's how we spend the lost revenue dollars. So, that really distorts what you're seeing here. So, for right now, I have not included any budgeted expenses in twenty-six for those. But before I file forms with the state, I will be folding that into there for projects. But I thought for purposes of these discussions, those are kind of a, we have to do, right? We've already entered into the contract, so I felt it would be better to just have this be our clean operating.
But that'll, those will slide in to the.
Wherever.
Two-two-zero.
Wherever they fit, yes. Most of them, I'm trying to track most of them in O-two-two-zero. Some of the first things we did really weren't capital. I, um, first one that comes to mind, for example, is the compensation classification study. So, that's why it's hard to separate them out unless I give you, you know, twenty pages, which I didn't think you would want for that. So, that's why I just separated it out of here in the budget anyway. Uh, let's see, other things, the marketing is on here, which you've already had a presentation about. Other policy administration is primarily what we pay for our audit fee, filing fees with the state, that kind of thing. Activity oh-seven-hundred, ninety-one-hundred for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand is our postage line item. We cover out of that activity most of the postage for all the departments. That is quite high right now. You can see it's, um, it, it's just already at a hundred thousand. I think that's primarily due to election activity in the fall. So, I'm hoping that we are not going to spend as much in the second half of the year. But there's been.
Daycare? Would you agree?
Yeah.
I was gonna say that, that's a lot.
Yeah. Yes, so hopefully, so hopefully, we're not gonna go over budget there. I, I could not find much, I tried to see if there's postage rates that are already scheduled increases. I did not find much, so hoping this, this will cover it, yeah. Hoping we've got it. And then the rest are, again, those pass-through utility accounts for phone service. And I, we are in the middle of trying to change phone service, so I, I don't know what that looks like for twenty-six. So, I am going to go ahead and budget the expense and the revenue the same. And once we get the new system implemented, that will, next year's budget will probably look different for those. I, this one, if you want to look at the expenses by kind of the account type, and see what we have for dues and memberships is a large one because that's where we pay ISAC dues, NACO. There's quite a few things like that that we belong to. The increases there are primarily, there's a few thousand for the audit services that just was going up. You can see I took down utilities and just, we made some other adjustments where they needed. Our next activity is a painful one. Actually, this one isn't too bad. We'll go through the sheriff's liability insurance first. We've always, for some reason, tracked that separately from our other insurance, so I am continuing that. Um, we are, the best information that I have today from ICAP is to expect five to ten percent increases, which is, but, but that increase is from what we actually paid in twenty-five. And if you remember, we held our budget artificially low for twenty-five because we were hoping that some of the high premiums in the previous year were going to settle down as we moved out of the derecho. And instead, it's going the other direction. We've had, there's been too many other weather activities, I think primarily. So, the sheriff's really is not too bad. Went up slightly. And when I'm saying slightly, that's because it's less than five thousand dollars. But then, as we move into the rest of our insurance, there's a substantial increase here. Again, what I did is I budgeted a seven and a half percent increase, which was the midpoint of what they suggested to me to budget for. But I did that based on what we actually paid in twenty-twenty-five, which was different than what we budgeted for twenty-twenty-five, substantially different. So, that is why you're seeing a large increase. I just don't, it does not appear that trend is gonna change anytime soon. So, I, I was rolling the dice last year, hoping things were going to settle down. Now, it does not appear that that's happening, so, um, we could choose to fund some of that on a fun balance if you want to. I just, this is exactly why I don't like to do that because we did that last year and now it just makes it more difficult the next year because now you've got two years' worth of increases that we're gonna pick up. I don't know if you have questions about any of those in particular?
On the unemployment, that first line, that six-oh-one?
Yes.
We just haven't, we just not paid that yet. Just looking at it, sort of inconsistent there.
Well, and it, it will always be inconsistent because we only have to pay unemployment if we have eligible claims submitted. It is not, private employers, you've heard the governor talking about that, they have to pay in all the time, a set amount. We only reimburse for actual claims. So, if we have had good experience, we don't pay anything. But it's very difficult to know that we won't pay anything. So, I, I'm more comfortable budgeting something. Probably doesn't have to be that twenty-five thousand if you, you know, if we want to choose a different amount, we could.
If that's one that we've maybe historically been closer to that five thousand dollar, then, I, I don't know.
Well.
Beyond twenty-twenty-three, right?
Right, it depends on how far you go back because there's years where it was higher, there's years where it's lower.
I was thinking, if we're, if we're approaching some of this from a.
Right.
Fun balance side.
Yes, that would be a better one.
Look at fun balance.
Yeah, I would agree, but that would be better.
It's high rate of the country view.
Yes.
Range rate, um, but there are, you know, things throughout the year that can happen or, um, I suppose like, I would say that I don't anticipate we'll have enough there unless we're having a similar situation like, you know, the country view, or we had the school health nursing program, that was a big year too with public health. Um, so those are really like operational changes where we had a lot of unemployment. Um, but it is tough. Sometimes you get people that, I mean, they have eighteen months to submit these, so we do keep on them. And, uh, there was a time period where unemployment was getting awarded very, like, often, even like seasonal employees when they're seeing unemployment and some things, which, um, was kind of unique. But, uh, yeah, I think that's, it's probably close to that or maybe half. I mean, just on the, in case that someone goes, not aspiration or disciplinary action or something like that. Performance too, but that's pretty few and far between.
You could play around with that number a little bit, you know.
Yeah, I think, I think if we have, if we paid five thousand dollars since FY twenty-three.
But we, I'm happy to read, I'm happy to reduce it to that, although.
No, even if it has to go.
Well, there's so many, there's so many unknowns.
But we'll see.
Coming at us from the federal level right now.
Sure.
I'm assuming that insurance increases it. Have we reduced our claims? We had quite a few claims or problems with insurance.
You know, it comes and it goes, so.
It seemed to go, I thought, more than it comes. It goes up. And we had quite a few.
Had a very low number for a while.
Maybe an update sometime would be good. I don't know, I'm sure we're doing, trying to reduce.
I, I believe that we're doing a lot of things to try to reduce that. Now, we have Brad, the safety coordinator, who really does, he takes his job very seriously and tries, he works very hard with our staff to reduce those.
It might be nice though to have an update from him at some point in time on some of those things that he's working on.
Michelle, could we, could we go up to, uh, the revenues for district court fees?
Sure.
What, uh, what all does that entail? How do we get revenue from district court fees?
There is a, so Black Hawk County and Dubuque County both provide administrative offices, as I understand it, and I'm not the expert at this, but both provide administrative offices for the court system. So we do, we are allowed to be reimbursed some funds for that from the other counties. So that is what that is for, is what the other counties are paying us have administrative offices.
I don't wanna push you on the spot. How, do you know how many counties are within a district? Is it like nine, maybe, 11, somewhere in that ballpark?
Seven to nine, I wanna say. I, I can look that up and get back to you. It, actually, it might be more than that, there's, it's a pretty good list.
They aren't paying very much.
Well.
I, I know, it's probably advaricat drunk, as I look.
Yeah, we have, I know that occasionally we have looked at the rates. The thing is, we aren't spending very much. It, because it would be, I guess, akin to rent, but it's, they're already paying in a different way for the phone service and some things, so.
It'd be interesting to look at that, just, uh, see how those costs and everything balance out at some point.
We could look at that, yeah.
I don't wanna put more on your plate.
It's okay, that's what I'm here for.
He's trying to learn.
The lobbyists, I are asking too, about what that's available enough for mandated services.
Right.
That would be one, yeah. All right, we ready to go to rural fund? Jump over to rural. We've already looked at a little bit of this, because this is where we account for planning and zoning that we presented to you separately. That's what the land use and building and toll revenue is, and it's also activity 280, the expense. Then the other things that are on here are the costs for Northeast Iowa Response Group and the revenue coming back from the other cities that participate in that. Disaster or emergency management share. Black Hawk County Soil and Water, you would increase their budget to 10,000 for fiscal '25, and they have requested right now to put it in at that level again for '26.
At 10?
Pardon me?
At 10.
At 10, yes. And then, then we have the rural libraries, which, um, I, I did provide you a copy of the request letter they sent. It, I didn't, you know, I was struggling to see if it had an actual amount in it. Right now, I have left it at the '25 level, and they are gonna come present to you, I believe, next week is the schedule. So I thought it might be better to wait and adjust that after they speak with you.
And soil and water is coming back to help with their 10.
Or how they want to use their 10, yes.
The libraries, there was an issue last year with one community not being at the match.
Correct, so for many.
Aligned budget, does that reflect, are still coming in?
Well, yes, it does. It, so that, actually, if you choose to keep that provision in the contract, which I think is more than fair, that we would expect them, you know, we'd only pay half of what they're paying. I believe that reduction to that library goes way up this year. It was about $7,000 last year, and I think it's gonna go to 15. I did do some preliminary calculations, so that would have an impact on that one city. But I just wasn't sure what, what you were thinking. I didn't wanna show a change in this until you had a chance to talk about it.
But we have to change contract and then.
You would.
Do anything like that.
Yep.
Change for everybody.
Yep.
I mean, I, I, I agree with the premise, right?
Oh, yeah.
Our dollar range of matchup.
Yeah, and we went back to the city and the city said they were doing too. And we just said, it would be nice if it had been corrected, we thought, like, going forward, but it was, timing wise, no.
Remember, yeah, I do have the history here if we wanna look at it.
So does that work, how? Is our contribution based off of their previous years?
Yes, and it, it's a formula that takes into account their population, their total library budget, their rural circulation. So there's several things that go into it to determine how much each of them receives.
May get a wake up call when you say that, to avoid it happening.
Yep.
And the, the county had, has given them substantial increases over the last several years. I think that's probably why they kind of had forgotten maybe about that clause in the contract, because they had, it just hadn't happened before. But we have been increasing our contribution. You can see, you know, what we have done for the last 10 years. And the combination of that, plus all the issues coming from the state, I think are making it more difficult for them to sustain their funding.
Well, we did, yeah, like I said, we've done some pretty.
We did.
And then we did a large one last year.
Yes.
And how many libraries does this cover that?
Seven or nine, maybe nine.
Yeah, something in that, maybe under 10.
That would include like what, Dunkerton?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yep.
Lepore, et cetera?
Yep.
Marleau, Cedar Falls.
Oh, Marleau, Cedar Falls, yeah, okay.
Yeah, everybody, yeah.
Because there, there are a lot of people that come to those libraries who are rural resident, right? So they also provide their rural circulation and.
There's a listing.
I have a list and I. That's true, yeah, it should be in, probably it's in the letter too, that I think is in your materials.
No, there's.
Next.
There's seven listed on the letter.
Okay, it's only seven.
Then one of those may not be eligible.
Well, they're eligible just not for the.
Eligible up to.
For the full amount, yeah. If you just do the formula, it doesn't work, yeah.
So right now, what you have included is everyone as if they met the requirement.
Yes, that's correct.
But in the event that one doesn't meet the requirement, let's say it's $14,000 shy, do the remainder of those dollars get evenly distributed, or what, or did they just come back?
I think they, at this point, for this year, they just are coming back, the county.
Well, they don't actually, I mean, you just don't make that distribution.
Right, yeah, so when I say coming back, I'm just, yeah, I just didn't disperse them.
Yeah.
But it just stays in our budget. Yeah, that, yeah, we'll figure out how to do that so that I don't have that left sitting in the budget this year. This year, I did, I have requested their statistics already. I did not have those last year until July, so I was not, I just didn't realize it was happening until, so.
We won't do that again before with the.
No, it was, I was a shock to all of them, I think, to be fair to.
He's, he's got all of about 14,000.
That's what I'm remembering, but you know, my memory's good, but.
Yeah.
All right, we ready to go, the other rural that we have is some township activity. This year, I am budgeting for repayment of the loan, starting the loan. I've only, I am only budgeting right now for a repayment from Barclay Township. If you remember, we are loaning money for a fire truck. I believe there will likely be also a loan, Fox Township, but I don't have that information yet, so. I, and I've also incorporated in here, Tim Jamison made a presentation to you about increasing trustee pay. And he and I talked and we put in, I've increased that quite a bit, from $500 to $9,520. And that's based on, I think, probably $20 a meeting. But the hard part is guessing how many people are gonna request it, because as that pay per meeting increases, we are assuming more people will hassle with pay for it to be paid. And we won't know that till we do it, so.
We could adjust that 100 together and see what we get.
Yep.
No, that's based on, is that based on 100% participation?
No.
Just a rough estimation?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, then we have a few other miscellaneous activities. District court, we are required to pay, well, okay, first of all, in the revenue, I took out the $500. That, I think it was for attorneys that used certain things out of the law library, and we have not received any money for that for several years, because the world has moved to an electronic platform, and they're not paying anymore. So I, I was just cleaning house and got rid of that. We, we are, we are required to provide interpreter expense when it's needed for court system. I'm surprised at how little that is, but we have been budgeting 5,000. Fortunately, haven't used it, you never know when you might need to. That's what's hard about a lot of this, is totally out of our control. We get a bill, we have to pay it. Same thing with the court-appointed guardians for youth. And also in here, there is a line item for where we are paying Dubuque County for our share of their court space. You know, as we talked about earlier, they all pay us, and then we pay Dubuque too, because they also house it. That's it for that one. HHS, this formerly known as DHS, it's hard to change how you say that, but this is the department that's housed at Pinecrest currently. We are required to provide support to them, and this is the budget they turned in. Bottom line of expense, they did not change at all, which is good for us.
You still have quite a few people that work remotely too, right?
I hear that, yeah.
Does that change, Lori? Lori, does that change that most of HHS is still working remotely, or?
I'm sorry.
The HHS and the remote workers, there are still quite a few of them.
There's still, yeah, there's still quite a few of them that are working remotely. Sorry, had a hard time hearing.
That's right, we'll, we'll work on.
And the one I have in here is juvenile court services. This is another pass through. We pay for various things. The juvenile detention is North Iowa juvenile detention, where we pay for most youth if they have to be here. We try, sheriff tries not to have them in the jail, because he has to. And I did, at that budget, I did leave the same. There is quite an increase from fiscal '23 to '24, so let's see how that goes. We also have to pay that court-appointed defense fund for indigent juveniles. That is a payment we make to the state of Iowa annually. And I believe that's gonna conclude all of our department presentations. Seems like we've been doing that for a while. So then I have a short panel that I thought we would roll through. Since we do have some new supervisors, I thought we would kind of review the property tax levies that are typically used by Black Hawk County. There are primarily four, and this will be review for some of you, but the general basic levy is our primary levy that's currently limited to $3.50, $1,000 of value. And then House File 718 applied a new limit on growth to that. So if your assessed value, or not assessed, taxable value grew more than 2.75% this year, a drop from three, they, they reduce your 350. So for this year, when I say 350, I really mean it's gonna be $3.46. It, it's just how they do the math to apply that restriction. That is our primary property tax levy, and that pays for benefits, it can pay for almost anything that benefits all county residents. That's where most of your base salaries are paid from, utility, fuel, anything you can think of. We also then use the general supplemental levy. That one works a little bit differently. There isn't a rate limit on it, but the types of expenses that can be paid from it are what are limited. So elections can be paid out of that levy. Our property liability insurance that we just looked at fortunately is paid out of this levy, because that would be really difficult if it were, had to be covered under the 350. Um, some juvenile care expenses are paid out of there. And then the, the largest, most significant one is employee benefits. So employees who are paid out of the general fund under the 350, their employee benefits can be paid out of the general supplemental. So that is a way we have been able to really balance, um, a lot of our general fund expenses. Other levies that we use, the rural basic levy, and that's limited to $3.95 per $1,000 of just the rural taxable value. The kind of expenses that can be paid by that have to be primarily intended for rural residents. There is, and this is potentially a new levy we might choose to use this year. There's a rural supplemental levy that can also be used to pay employee benefits for employees who are being paid by the rural levy. So if we're in a situation where we might wanna exceed that 395, we can add supplemental, should we choose to. And then the last one is our debt service levy, which is used to repay principal and interest on debt. And I, this is a slide with the great graphic that Gabby did last year, explaining how counties, we have to be at that $3.50 general levy maximum before you can use the general supplemental for any employee benefits. And we, of course, have no problem getting to that. But that is why sometimes some employee benefits will be covered under the 350 and some will not. That's how you kind of balance that. You gotta fill that bucket, the 350 bucket first, before you can move anything to general supplemental. So I, we're gonna talk about our initial tax askings worksheet, and I don't know, this, I may be doing this backwards, but these are some of the assumptions that are in, I, I just had to make some choices and assumptions to provide that to you today. So for now, we have elected officials pay increases at 3%. That's the same as the non-bargaining across the board. I was kinda surprised when I realized there's actually 21 positions that are affected by that in probably six departments. We're continuing, I am proposing, did some homework on this yesterday, that we continue to assume that we'll have a million dollars in general fund savings from positions that go unfilled for parts of the year. That's fairly consistent with our actual results for the last couple of years. And then I'm also proposing a half a million that we assume will be left from, in the general supplemental fund for employee benefits that go unused. One of the interesting things, that has jumped around quite a bit. We're finding, especially in the jail, they hire young people. So as we have long-term family coverage retirees, we're hiring young people who many times, because, well, of the, of the current federal law, they're still on their parents' insurance. So we don't have actually any health insurance cost for them for a little bit. So it's, um, yeah, we're taking advantage of that until they age out, and then we'll be covering them too.
500,000, that's a good amount, it's been trending that.
It's, as I said, that's kinda jumped all over. This year, I. This year, I, I'm trying to kind of fix that with the vacancies I know about. So I did not budget, you know, historically, we probably always assumed we needed family coverage for a new employee. So vacant positions, we budgeted for family. We are not seeing that now. We're, a lot of them are coming in and only taking single, which makes a absolutely huge difference in that. So I'm, I'm trying to budget most of the vacancies. Of course, those are only vacancies we know today. We've got 18 months of change in there. But I've tried to bring most of the vacancies down. I'm budgeting them only at single. We do have general supplemental fund reserves. So if we somehow had a year where we had to replace everyone with family coverage, while we would need to use fund balance, we, we would be okay, I think. So. We already talked about the community funding. I believe the only new position that I'm aware of is in the sheriff's office, the chief deputy position. We already talked about the courthouse security being, historically, being completely funded by the room and board fund.
Could we just, sorry, before we move on, Sheriff's Office?
Yes.
That's the one where there is a position currently held that he intends to not fill. Is that correct? Is that the position we're talking about? That the chief deputy, new position, but he's, he's saying currently that he would not fill, maybe Amanda has some.
I remember.
That's not.
I initially heard he wasn't going to fill it.
Yeah, I, he had, I thought.
We did, um, so there were some changes. So that trickle-down effect would be, so Captain Torones is the chief deputy, so that's filled. Um, it kind of left where, um, like the command staff hasn't really changed. There's always been a sheriff and seven command staff. Last fiscal year, there was four lieutenants, three captains. This fiscal year, there's four captains, one being a chief deputy, and three lieutenants. So it's really kind of at that sergeant level where we're seeing that, I believe he intended to fill it. I could be wrong. I could check with him. But he also talked about how we changed, we took three sworn sergeant positions and moved them into civilian, non-sworn positions, which are, um, uh.
Less expensive.
Thank you. So, um, but I, I don't recall him saying he was going to not fill it, but we could check. It'd be a good.
Yeah, that, I mean, maybe he has revisited that. I know the last conversation he and I had.
I think it was just he was kind of leaving it open and with plans.
I mean, in that vacancy eventually, whether it's a sergeant or a deputy or a detention officer, I mean, that may, there probably will be a vacancy somewhere throughout the year that would account for that. Empty, because they're not fully staffed and have yet to be, um, but, uh, I believe.
We're ultimately adding a spot.
You're adding a spot, yeah.
That was my understanding. Maybe I'm wrong, but.
Adding a spot, yeah.
It is, I believe.
He's there now, we think, just guessing.
Oh, just guessing?
Yeah.
I have to, I have to probably find out for sure, but, uh, well, actually, I mean, they had all those. We probably are around eight, nine.
At least with all the changes that happened in January. Before January, I think I had four deputies and maybe four CDOs.
It's probably between eight and, um, but, uh, yep. And then, of course, there's always the, as those up and over into command staffs. And there's the internal process through civil service promoting the others into sergeant roles, which then leaves gaps in deputies and in this case, DOs with the non-sworn. So, um, we're probably at what we were, not a lot changed in the last month from when we had all the retirements.
And, you know, that's, those vacancies are part of how we saved the $1 million. So it's all, kind of rolls up into that.
I was going to ask about the food bank, uh, the allocation towards that. Does that go discretionary for them, do you know? Or is that $50,000 basically allocated towards Black Hawk County residents? Does anybody know?
No. Only the answer to that. I, I'm sure, I, I don't know that we required that, but I am fairly certain if I asked them for a report, we could get something and I would expect it to be only Black Hawk County.
Having them here and recording, so we have time to ask for that.
Yeah.
Have them.
I thought they mentioned it was for their pantry services and specifically.
Yeah.
What should they, Black Hawk County?
They did.
Only.
So courthouse security, we do have to do some more work on.
Yeah, that's, that's one of those work sessions.
Well, it's, you know, what I showed, yeah, what I showed was continuing the current process. And there will not be enough, there likely will not be enough money in the 60% to fund that because we are collecting so much less room and board revenue. And the best information I have right now is people expect that to continue to decline. That, that could change, but I don't know. But this goes in the hole before the end of 2026, based on what I understand today that way.
That's assuming that the funding is just coming from board, attorney's fine, fines collections?
There's also actually a portion of fine money that the sheriff agreed many years ago to put in that activity as well. So there's some, some of the sheriff's portion of fines, the 60% of the room and board fund, and then some from the attorney fine collection.
So outside of that, any, any other costs would, it would have to come, I guess, from whatever other funding pool, right?
If the costs exceed that, yes, likely. I mean, that, I think, probably has to become part of your 350 portion of funding, your general basic levy. So that would increase the expenses under there. And at this point, I did not include, we just haven't been far enough along with, I know you've had some conversations about the attorney space, but particularly as I was working on this in the last couple of months, I did not have estimates, so there is nothing been incorporated yet for that. Lot of things on the list to talk about.
For sure.
We just talked about the general supplemental and what we budgeted for insurance. One thing I do want to point out about the rural fund as we go through the tax askings. I currently have that showing as split, whoops, I got a typo in there. 25% to general fund and 75% to rural. It says 25, but it should be 75% to rural. But for fiscal '25, we did increase that split to 80. So that will be another decision choice as we go through this. And I just put the libraries and the.
And they've got some data there on usage or on time?
Um, I'm not sure, well, we'd have to look at what they have for the. We also did start charging a portion of fuel to the rural fund because a large portion of that is for the deputies that are patrolling the rural areas, so.
Along with fuel, do we, do we calculate maintenance?
There, historically here, nothing. Wait, last year was the first time that we charged any non-personnel from the sheriff's department to the rural fund and I can.
But it is something we can, I mean, legitimately do.
Legally, you, because it's, I believe that legally you could, but you have to be careful because it has to be benefiting only the rural. That's where, that's where it gets difficult because.
But if we take a portion of the gas?
You definitely, you could. You, you, you could if we can track the data, which I don't know, but I assume we could eventually if we don't have it.
It should be a percentage, similar to a percentage that you'd use for, like, gas versus vehicle maintenance, right? I mean, similar.
Potentially, I would, yeah, they might want to do that by actual vehicle, I would think, because the fuel will be by actual vehicle.
Then same.
Yeah.
I don't know how they could track that, you know, looking at patrol. I mean, it's, it's driving around, I mean, even if you pull data points, looking at calls for service and time, it's, it's messy and it doesn't really show you the whole picture, you know?
One of the reasons we use the, I think, the 25-75 or 20-80 split is because of that, yeah.
And that's the one we can change, or that's a number that we can change.
Yeah, we can, about it anyway, yep.
Good.
And I did, I've included, this is basically an arbitrary amount, but an arbitrary amount of debt service to be repaid on a new issue. You, I'm sure, remember that last year elected that we will sell bonds, that will fund the capital-eligible bond projects from '24 and '25 that I plan to do later, well, 20, I'm sorry, '25 and '26, I plan to do later this spring. So I am putting in something. Those are other, we do need to review capital and make some of those choices so I can get the bond issue things moving soon.
Those are, that's the amount that we talked about for Black, for.
Well, this is, this is the first year's repayment, so it's, it's an estimate right now.
So $585,000 is?
Yeah, an estimate of the amount of debt service we'd have to repay. I was, that is an increase in the debt service levy, which we'll see when we get next. This is a slide I developed, because I know I've had questions about what's our savings, what's our savings on the vacancies? So, um, I did, this, the fiscal '25 year date does run through the end of January. And I did that on purpose because I wanted to pick up the retirement payouts on so many. We had a number of retirements that happened end of December into January. So pleasantly surprised, we're, we're on target with that, I think, right now. Depending on how fast positions have been filled. I know Amanda has talked about, you know, we, we don't have as many vacancies, so. Right now, it appears we'll be okay for '25, which makes me feel better about 2026, I guess. I think that is the last one of that that we're going to go through today. I know Steph's sitting out here going, will you get onto it? Want to see this next one, I know. So here we are. So when we develop this, all those department things we've shown you become a line item in the appropriate fund. So I believe we have talked about all the line items for departments that are on here. So for the general fund right now, if you remember last year, the revolting thing at this point was we realized, can't get that right to where I want it to be. We were 1.6 million over the 350 limit a year ago. And I've budgeted differently. For example, the community funding is different than what I had in the first draft last year. But right now, we are, we are still unfortunately over the 350, but only $376,000. So that's, that's a lot, a lot easier mountain to, to up than where we were at at this point last year. So I was happy to see that.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah. And one thing I would, probably the, the general revenue, I would point out, that's at the top of the second page. That is where we record things such as the state rollback replacement and now the business property tax credit replacement from the state. And if you remember, the rollback is declining, $118,000 a year, plus some other things are declining. So that revenue source is dropping nearly 14%. That is mostly due to things enacted at the state level. But that general basic levy, then, the collections are an increase of 2.1%. If you would, if you don't make any changes, which we already know we will, but this is our starting point, I guess. Then general supplemental fund, that's a large increase for a couple of reasons. Partly the increase in employee benefits and partly that substantial increase in the liability and property insurance is what's causing that to be a large increase. So we're at a 3.6% increase in collections just for those two funds. Let's see. We get to the rural fund, which actually shows a reduction. And that's primarily because this is only showing 75% of the patrol deputies instead of deputies. So that it is a change, yeah. And local option tax revenue is higher. That's another thing that's in there. So that would be one thing. If you, if we change that allocation of deputies, that helps the issue in the general fund. That won't, it won't reduce taxes in the general fund, but it'll let us get under our legal limit. And then it would increase this. And I haven't worked out the details of the amounts of that yet. Debt service fund, again, as I said, I put in an arbitrary amount because I know we have, we need to have something. And that's a large increase in that levy and that debt collection because last year we just didn't, the year before, we had not chosen to bond and I, I had to reduce the levy. Didn't really have a choice. So our total property tax askings are an increase of 4.6%, which is honestly higher than I'd like to have. If you'd like to stick with inflation if you could, but there's just things going on that aren't there. So then I have one more exhibit, because usually people want to know, what does that mean for my property? You're raising it by that, because that's how much our collections are going up. That's how much the big pot's going up. So this is a draft of what it would look like for various properties. Residential, a 4.21% increase, and that's urban residential. Commercial, 2.28%, industrial, 0.12%. The rural residential at 1.49% right now, and egg at 2.19% right now. And I, if I were you, I'd be asking, why are you using $120,500 for a residential property? I did that to make the comparison make sense to '25, because we had large evaluations. And that was the average that I was showing you last year for our example property, which, you know, probably isn't a real property, right? But I was trying to make it comparable, so I had to use that value again this year.
So if you had $100,000, which is always used every year, kind of.
It, your, your dollars would be a little different, but your rate should be the same.
Same, yeah.
Yep.
And some of. Right sizing that debt service levy impacts the increase.
Absolutely.
Presumably, next year, we don't have the same sort of, no, unless we add another.
It depends on, right, it depends on what we choose to do. I will be updating the schedules that I showed you a year ago, once we have a little more information. Having, I'm having our bond attorney work with me right now on, I just wanted to take the requests that departments have made, make sure I've got them in the right bucket, bond or no bond. And then you'll be able to evaluate those and realize what you want to do there. I think that's everything I have for today. Well, I do have the schedule. Yeah, I lied. Karen's laughing at me. Don't know if I got it up here actually. Yes, I did. So topics that I think we still need to talk about, and some of these dates are not final. I'm just putting them on here. Next week, the rural libraries are coming, so we definitely will talk about that. I think, I hope that I'll be ready to talk about changes in our general fund balance, maybe our budget performance year-to-date this year. And depending on how much time you want to spend, you could possibly also talk about elected officials compensation and/or, I hope to have more capital improvements information by next week. I'm not sure about that yet, just while it's at the bottom of the list. And then on the 18th, soil and water will be here. And those are the only changes. The rest of that is the same schedule that you've seen before.
So we might, depending on a couple of factors, that capital improvement could potentially either be the 11th of the K2 presumably?
Yeah, or anything else. If there's other topics you want to discuss, I can get them added.
But we're staying within the Tuesday time, right?
I don't think we need to add on Thursdays for.
No, I know, I want to make sure we all recognize that. I've just met Tuesdays.
Michelle, what was the total? Was it around 70 million? Probably, I thought it was a 32 and a 30.
Yeah, I'm only showing you a portion of our budget right now. I have not added in. a portion of our budget right now. I have not added in, like, Secretary Rhodes is not on here, local option, because they don't pull property taxes, right? Capital improvements, some other things that I will be adding in future meetings, but, so for our primary operating, yeah, we're looking at about a sixty-seven, seventy million dollar budget right now.
Appreciate the schedule. I hadn't even thought about it, but.
Suck the air out of the room.
But I have a way of being Debbie Downer, I know. Don't mean to.
Like a lot. Well, actually, I think we're better, I mean, like, I think where we're at, even in the information, we're certainly, we've got further ahead than we were last year.
And we did, you know, we did have the revaluation increase
Yeah, we-
About three, two point seven percent or something like that, and we've also the TIF dollar, or property in TIF actually went down slightly, about thirty million, so we had, we had a little good news that helped us, and you can see how much difference that made.
Yeah. It's done a great job, and I just think everybody's, yeah.
Our departments have done a good job.
They do, yeah.
Yeah.
You too. I didn't mean to slight you, I just had good information from the department heads to work with and to start, so that's good for everybody. Just gonna keep that graphic, you know, for years to come, pour in the bucket.
I am.
Yeah, we were gonna see that over and over.
For year, you don't know how many years I wanted the graphic, and now that I got it, I'm using it.
We'll never go over.
My mission is to educate the world on how that works.
Thank you.
All right. Item twelve canvas, this is a resolution to certify the outcome of the special election held Tuesday, January forty eighth, twenty twenty-five, and according to Iowa code five zero point two four. So moved.
No, that's, no, that's okay.
This is a resolution.
You don't do it till we're done, right? You want, no. I was gonna say, I know, and we have a new-
Yes.
And I don't know much help you need.
So Josh will be doing the canvases moving forward.
Yeah. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Yes, very excited.
Yeah.
So that means I can be one of you guys to do this. So I just have two books. Such as press and weights?
Yes, it is.
I'll, I'll do one with you then.
All right. You're gonna have to hold my hand, it's a, no clue.
Oh, no, I will.
It's a tough job.
It is.
Certifying results.
We're gonna say no, it's on here in the public.
And so what we do, and so these are- Sorry.
Yeah, never again.
Print it out on that election result computer. Just try to have a good pattern now with that results.
Right.
Results to scan. It's not, I have to, or the server.
Somebody tell me.
And, yeah, and then, and just have, I can't, I know I can't, it's kind of back, back room.
Plus you did it.
So then in tablet books, so each precinct has a calendar with the results on it. And this is printed on that tabulator on election night, so what the board does is they're just sending it from, I print on the results to place out on the plate. Cool, 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 on each tablet. I would just read through the, um, the vote center, and so you can find the vote center right there, vote center one, and then-
That's weird.
I can see Josh doing it now, and that is leading to-
It's just that literally I just hear it. I can write.
But writing was processed.
So this is all set up too, and you can also find it in the front.
Sixteen, curtain about forty-eight, thirteen, twenty-eight, three, four.
Forty-three, twenty-four, twenty-nine, one. Yep. You can just look at what's happened. And then center three, overfill.
All right.
Forty, twenty-one, thirty-five, six, one, zero.
Curtain about two thirty-one, fifty-seven, sixty-nine.
Center four, have this down. Yeah. Sixty-two, thirty-seven, seventeen, seven, five, five zeros.
Wasn't this a socialization? Make sheet, specifically with the location.
Um, just on maybe the overspot at center. We would just see on the middle of the center.
He has no idea.
And this, next one will be vote center five, Hudson. Sixty-seven, fifty-eight, forty-six, zero, one, and zeros. And then you can also see how many ballots were cast at each one. And that says it right here. So one's a stitch. Seven, one. I was explaining. Um, votes number six, Raymond. And two, twenty-nine, two, zeros. The way you're looking at it. They were at five thousand pounds.
I know, I know.
Get excited, we did five candidates. Vote center seven, this is Cedar, one, three thirty-seven, one oh nine, thirty-five, six, nine, zeros. That's always really- Vote center eight, Cedar, multiple, two, one fifty-six, ninety-eight, twenty-four, two, zeros. This is vote center nine, all of them three. This is the first name, and on this side. One sixty-two, one twenty-four, twenty-three, two, three, zeros.
Thanks, Josh.
Cedar Falls Ward four. Two eighty-three, one oh four, twenty-four, five, seven, zeros. And Mr. Chair, I have zero provisional, we have zero.
Except you must think this is like they are.
Yeah, nobody uses these.
Okay, I will.
A little bit of noise.
Good. Since it's a forgotten book, I can start passing around the papers, but this is the only thing for them this time.
Never seen you have good tapes.
And then I always just remember the chairperson is, which is Davis this year, to sign on the chairperson's spot.
Your email is signed, set, so the email was just modified.
Oh, yay.
And then you want to sign on.
That's a plus, too. Usually there's millions of them, it seems like they never end, it's gotta be another way to do it. I bet a hundred.
If you're not ready for your computer, we can at least get you your iPad, or at least get it on your phone, so you can at least check your files. Did you get your desk straightened out, did you figure out anyone? So, no rush.
It's kind of, yeah, I just stand and do.
Probably right with.
Congratulations.
Or, yes, you are. Well, I guess once you get sworn in. Friday?
Yes.
That's Josh.
At three, three thirty, we already have a court rules. Do you have a big group?
So, next, the, the court security issues, proposing that, what do we need to do, wait for final numbers?
And then the seal.
No, we don't-
The money.
We should probably, I'd rather do it sooner rather than later.
I said, we need the budget.
Technically, we have need of two of these.
Something's budgeted. Well, you love them.
Technically, I do too.
Have to tell them. Yeah, we need that. Fully a budget session, not a word session. It's like, you need to know the difference.
These are both ours, so this can go with-
Have we, we haven't thought about it or really talked about it at all, because it could be a mix of any officers.
Thanks, Josh, your first canvas.
Yeah, it was an easy one.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you, yeah, congratulations on the job. We expect more of this one next time, too, so whatever.
Don't worry, they do this every time the news, I gotta, gotta do the paperwork.
You gotta do it. That's what I said, they'll have those long.
I know.
Arnel Kurtz suggested reaching out to, and to Beaufort County.
What they do?
Yeah, and so I figured, okay, I'll give them a buzz and maybe even do a couple of few trips. Also related to the county attorney's office setups that they've got, I talked with Brian the other day.
Yeah.
About a couple of things, and, and, so I don't know.
Well, good, because he's been pretty quiet, I mean, he's been quiet.
Yeah. Well, we were, I know, just from sitting on that, we were waiting.
Different thing, yeah, I know, but I, that's a different option, but I, he really wasn't saying.
We still need to do it.
Yeah.
I, when I said, yeah, it was like, I said, how much money?
We still need to do a resolution.
Oh, yes.
Oh. Resolution to, we have a resolution to certify.
You said, yeah.
Do we already have?
We did a motion, but we needed it.
Vote, right?
Yeah.
Michelle Walter, redo a recall, roll call.
You should have, you just started.
It's almost eleven thirty.
Schwartz? Brand?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Any reports or information from the board?
Just an FYI, is we have an interview Justin and I do of the P and Z cam that was Thursday. Hopefully maybe have that for next Tuesday.
Yep, yeah, we just placed, we'll have a nomination for border health, Chris and I met with them yesterday, so. And then there is a draft language that's been sent to policy review for local preference.
Is it?
Um, I think so.
Meeting on that pretty soon, huh?
Presumably, as soon as they can get that through.
No, we're working on it for a couple of weeks, so I expect that will take a couple. Okay. Want an adjournment motion?
That'd be great.
They did it all over the state, all, pretty much, also the health departments kind of started doing that health audit scene where the grants were gonna impact them in case they lose them. Thanks, Chris.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
All ready to say aye?
Aye.
On the same side.
We could go for a new.